Want me to do it again?
Yes.
Meeting of the Southfield Board of Education is called to order. Ms. Cool, would you please leave after the flag of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Colonel Cass. I am President of the Southfield Board of Education.
Good evening, Yolanda Smith. The Vice President.
Betty Robinson, Secretary.
Michael Cool, Representative. Rance Williams, Trustee.
Linda Wood, Interim Superintendent. And my left, Kate Ginkovich, Director of Finance.
Joan Newberry, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Marcia Williams, Interim Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
And on my left, we have Ms. Nicole Prishin and Ms. Paula Johnson, who are going to attend. Ms. Paula Anderson, I thank you very much. And this evening, Ms., we have Mr. Justin Russo and Ms. Amber Cool. I'm here from the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union to present cash grants awards to the following teachers. Denise Bush, Thompson K-28 International Academy. Lisa Winston, Vandenberg World's Cultures Academy. Tori Mott, Southfield Laythrop High School. And Hank Lewandowski, Levee Middle School. Please welcome Mr. Russo and Ms. Cool and the teachers.
Can I say a few words if you wouldn't mind? My name is Justin Russo. I'm a development representative for Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. And as a credit union that serves educators, we're proud to support local students by funding out-of-the-box learning experiences for students. That's why we've established our Classroom Cash Grant Program, which is designed to assist educators recovering the cost of innovative classroom projects that directly benefit their students and ultimately out of the community. This year, we received over 25,000 online votes on our application, which were uploaded on our microsite, classroomcash.org, and voted on this past October. In total, we've awarded more than $40,000 in grants to the top voter. And today, I'm pleased to be able to recognize four teachers from Southfield Public Schools who are winning Classroom Cash Grant. First, for the project titled "I Am a Reader, I Am a Leader," we have Tori Mott. Second, for the project titled "iPad, I Learned," we have Tori Mott. And for his project titled "Ask for ASC," I believe we have Hank Lewandowski. And finally, for Mrs. Winston's digital project, we have Lisa Winston. And I'd like to offer the teaching opportunity, if you want to say a word or a piece about your project at all, it's not going to take long. At the end.
I'd like to say thank you to the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. It's an honor to be able to present my students with boogie boards, and they are kind of similar to an engine sketch. But what's really cool about it is it's digital, and I can turn their writing and their illustrations in kindergarten into a PDF. Thank you so much.
I also would like to say thank you to the Michigan Schools and Government for the honor to be able to be a part of this wonderful program and for putting kids first and awarding money to our children. Second graders at Thompson K. International Academy were very excited to participate in this program and then to ultimately be one of the recipients. And we are building a classroom library using readers workshops. Readers are leaders. Our kids believe that, and they are leaders. And I look forward to great things for my students. I'd like to acknowledge my principal, who's here, Mrs. Lycey, for helping support the program and student advocacy. Thank you so much for your help.
I'm representing one of my ASC teachers, Angel Lewandowski. Ms. Lewandowski has back thirty-three weeks to go, and her stamina is just not up to par yet, and they get through the day and the evening. But through this Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union grant, we say thank you very much, and our students are downloading apps where they're used in the classroom. And when they see their work go from the iPad up on the smartboard, they are so very, very excited, and they see themselves as digital natives. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to also thank the credit union as well. This is the second time that I've been able to give a grant. I'm so thankful for it. We're able to buy two iPads made for our classrooms. So my high schoolers are also downloading apps, and they're up here editing, and they never have to worry about if they don't have their books, we've got it right on the iPad. So thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, and once again, congratulations to these great teachers.
Well, that is just wonderful. The Head Start Joint Governance Training was held on February 24 and 25 for the Policy Council and the Governing Board. Ms. Janice Hill, Principal, is here to present certificates to the board trustee who participated in the training.
Good evening.
Good evening. And I'm Janice Hill, and I am very, very proud to present to two of our governing board members, our President, Ms. Karen Cass, and Mr. Yican, who participated in our Head Start Governance Required Training here at JWE for two days. And I think they learned a lot about Head Start and all the many facets and systems and services, and I'm very pleased to present them on behalf of the Jones Group, which is owned by Mabel Jones and myself, the Director of the Head Start Program. I want to present also the wonderful award.
I learned a lot.
I did too. The Michigan Association of School Boards has recognized the following Southfield Board of Education Trustees. Vice President Yolanda Smith has received the Award of Distinction and the Advocacy Skills Specialty Certification. Board Secretary Betty Robinson has received the Award of Distinction. Board Trustee Rance Williams has received the Award of Distinction.
I just want to briefly say, without sounding really corny, but when I ran for reelection the last time, one of the things I thought was most important was advocacy for the school district. And so I'm very pleased that the Michigan Association of School Boards offers a cohort specifically to help you gain field and advocacy for public education. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for this wonderful award, and anything I can do to enrich the lives of our children, you know, that's what it's all about, our children.
I want you to know that this board is an honor board. Every member of this board has reached some level of distinction, and we're very proud of it. Ms. Constance Mutry from GLP and Associates is here to present the Superintendent Appreciation Award to our former Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Dr. Linda Wood will accept the award and will be there.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this privilege. My name is Constance Mutry, and I'm a senior representative for GLP and School. The GLP family of companies has become the largest provider of retirement services since 1969. We at GLP look forward to assisting educators with learning in their retirement system, learning what to expect when they retire, and that really is our job and our main function. Southfield, the beneficiary of the GLP award goes to the former Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, and this award is to be used for the advancement of students with their desire to achieve a higher education. It could be used in any manner that the district needs necessary, but to provide for those students in scholarship ways. We have had in the past some recipients that have come up with creative ideas as to how we live this life for their students. So we at GLP would really like to know what Southfield decides to do with these funds. We, myself, Alex Kova, our President, Michael Gettle, one of our Vice Presidents, and the GLP families, really do appreciate the ability to offer and award this check to Southfield Schools. So, I'll just... Do you want to get in front of this lady? Please, this is a check on behalf of GLP.
I'd like to publicly thank GLP for this award on behalf of Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. And I know that Dr. Cook Robinson looks forward to sharing this gift with some of our graduating seniors, and hopefully seniors who will be pursuing careers in the field of education. Again, thank you so much. Thank you.
Now, we have the report of student board representatives. First, we'll have Miss Kennedy Armstrong from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Wood, Central Altus staffs and administrators, and Southfield Public Schools staffed parents and students and guests. My name is Kennedy Armstrong, and I am a student board member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Community service, leadership, reality walks, three days of standardized testing, and our so well-deserved midwinter breaks were the major events since this last, since my last February report. I'd like to begin with the community service event, Jeans for Teens, that was initiated by Tina Tiana Sales Liddell, a student at Southfield Regional. On February 14th, Tiana, with support from Ms. Tiffany Johnson, collected 120 pairs of jeans. Southfield Regional students were allowed to wear jeans on this day if they donated a pair of jeans or donated $5 towards the community fundraiser. On February 14th, Mr. Solomon and Mr. Mason took a group of young men belonging to Project Manhood to University of Michigan to attend the Martin Luther King ceremony. I would like to take a moment to thank Dr. Cook Robinson for sponsoring the Walk in Reality College Tours that were held on February 27th. Seventy-five students from Southfield Regional Academic Campus had the opportunity to visit Wayne State University, University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and Open Community College campuses for career enrichment and campus tours. Mrs. Choler and Mrs. McNeese, six block students, won first place in the National Alternative Education Association 2014 Student Video Contest. Their video, Zombie Attacks Full Team Ahead, will be featured on the NAEA website linked to YouTube. In addition, students will receive $400. In closing, please save the date, March 19th, for Southfield Regional Academic Campus Midwinter Career Day. Hope to see you Wednesday night from 6 to 8 p.m. Also, Dr. Wood, congratulations on your new position, and I appreciate everything you have done and will continue to do for our community and community.
Mr. David Cole, Southfield High School.
Hello, to the board of education, superintendents, administrators, and community members. I'm David Cole, and here is the blue jacket report. The Techno Jays hosted the District Robotics Competition on Friday, February 28th, and Saturday, March 1st. This competition consisted of over 35 robotic teams from schools all over Michigan. The juniors, the junior class had a great week of ACC/ENEME testing. Overall, Southfield had 98% of the students present, and will have makeup testing next week, March 18th, 19th, and 20th. Speaking of Southfield juniors, Malaya Watson has made it to the top 11 on American Idol and can be seen on a live show tomorrow and Thursday. Make sure you vote for our hometown Blue Jays. Southfield's Pantry Competitions will be held Wednesday, March 19th, in the Field House from 4:30 to 7 o'clock. Southfield wrestlers, Keith Lee, Ezekiel Baker, and Ezekiel Baker qualify and compete at the Michigan High School State Championship at the College of Irving Hills on February 27th and 28th. The two matmen became the eighth and ninth state qualifiers in school history. Spring sports are often run with baseball, basketball, and golf, or baseball, track, and golf for boys, and track, tennis, and softball for girls. Scholars plus students are working on their AP projects before their April deadline, and Southfield Student Congress will be hosting a spring blood drive on Friday, March 14th. All students 17 or older may donate. Sixteen-year-olds can donate with parental consent. Also, our Southfield J newspaper just released its fourth issue today and sold it around school for 50 cents. This new issue, this new issue features articles on Malaya Watson, our athletic signees, and our former superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Again, I would like to thank you for letting me have this wonderful opportunity to support high schools at the Board of Education. Let's go Southfield with Blue Jays tour. And if anybody wants a copy of our article, I have them, on the 50 cents.
Mr. Gregory Cunningham, University High School Academy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope you're all doing all right tonight? I was not here to report last month because I was in DC for Saker Internet Day 2014. It was a great experience meeting all the other students from different schools around the country, as well as officials from different companies like Microsoft and Google, taking part in the discussion panel about the benefits and shortcomings of the internet, and of course, being in DC with all the fantastic lineups and architecture. I'd like to thank the school board for allowing Mercy Way to go on the strip for the trip a lot of times. But, back to business. Rebecca Robinson, Tim Frey placed third in the Southfield-Laythrop Optimist Club Ethic Contest. U-Prep Zachary Winfrey was one of the winners of the Med Bee Bridge Magazine Renewable Energy poster contest, and his picture and poster were published in the magazine in Chicago. This Friday, our PTA is hosting Globe Bowling from 6 to 9 p.m. at Hartfield Wayne and Berkeley. We had our first poetry slam last Friday in University High School. We're students who recite poems and express themselves to the audience. Eighth graders are going to the Med Bee Conference at the Enigma Loft in Nashville, Tennessee. And finally, 54 of us are traveling to Madrid and Paris during spring break, and the information for our next international trip to London, Paris, sorry, London, England in 2016 has been a long wait. Thank you for your time, and have a nice night.
And Ms. Amanda Green, Southfield Laythrop High School.
Good evening. Southfield Laythrop High School has had many, many exciting events type twice since my last meeting. It was a really short month, due to the winter break, the wind, snow, daze, and the test schedule. On February 27th, Jack was sponsored a prom fashion show held in our school auditorium. The students got to see some amazing prom dresses that they could choose from from the different stores. All juniors and selected seniors took the ACC, ENEME, and workies last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The ladies charges won their district by defeating Oak Park, but they lost to Marion the following round. The boys varsity basketball team walked to Oak Park in the district finals. We want to say great job this year to the ladies and gentlemen. The school sponsors the boys varsity basketball regional tournament this week. On Friday, March 14th, the Southfield Student Congress will host another blood drive. Our goal is to collect more than 40 pounds of blood. Please help us reach our goal. And also on Friday evening, Student Congress will sponsor Daniel Blackout Dance from 7 to 10:30 in the school gym. Last, Lakers sponsoring an eighth-grade open house on Wednesday, March 26th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Come and see the school and learn about some of our youth programs. Thank you, have a good night.
And now, we come to the report of the superintendent. Our interim superintendent is Dr. Linda Wood.
Absolutely. And I wanted to just, first of all, share with everyone that I am so grateful to be able to serve in the role of interim superintendent, thankful for the board, for your trust, and I want everyone to know that we're going to move forward, we're not missing a beat. And with that said, during the first week of me serving as interim, I had the most wonderful opportunity to visit Vandenberg Elementary School, and I was surrounded with a sea of red and white cats as we celebrated Reading Month and Cat in the Hat. And I'd like to ask Ms. Lori Tunick to come to the podium, because we're very grateful for Lori, we're grateful for her relationship in the district with all of our teachers and the district as a whole, and for her being a wonderful conduit for enabling the National Education Association to visit Southfield Public Schools and delight on Vandenberg Elementary School. So first of all, Lori, we'd like to present a certificate to you on behalf of the National Education Association, and, yes. So Lori, if you would kindly just give a little brief overview of this last experience with all of what happened last Wednesday.
Well, I have to say, I've never smiled as much in one day as I did last Monday, the 3rd. This could not have happened without the staff and the principal at Vandenberg. They are phenomenal at what they do. That building was decorated with suits from the time you walked in the door, as you walked down the hallway. Every kid was involved in what was happening, and it was just a wonderful event. Delta Dental sponsors the Cat and Van Tour, and the Cat and Van Tour starts from one side of the country and it goes all the way to the other side. And I received a call from Delta Dental asking if we were interested in hosting the day. Of course, he said no. The President of the National Education Association, Dennis Van Ropel, was there. He joined the staff for lunch that was provided by Delta Dental, and he read in Dr. Sui's book, Green Eggs and Ham, to all of the kindergarten first, second, and third graders in the library. There were so many bodies in that little library, but it was great. They, the kids also took an oath to brushing their teeth twice a day for two minutes, as well as reading once a day for 20 minutes at a time. And it was just an excellent, excellent event. Delta Dental gave every student in the library a hardcover copy of Cat and Hat, bookmarks, stickers, calendars, posters, pencils, the hat, and... And so it was just so much fun, and NEA and Delta Dental were so impressed with Vandenberg that repeatedly they said to me, we are coming back to Southfield. We now know we have a district that we can count on to help us and present the information that they want presented. So it was a load of fun.
It was. It was. It was really a lot. It was. It was. And Lori, again, we really want to thank you, but we can't stop at this moment because we have to let the audience. And I want to just also just acknowledge Mrs. John for being a tremendous principal and all of the decorations that's in place, because we want to, right now, let the viewing audience and our staff members and families here in the audience get a sense of what we experienced last week. So, Ron?
The Dr. Sui Foundation and the National Education Association have been doing this for a number of years. During the last couple of years, we've become the corporate sponsor of the reader across America. Kids miss $50 million dollars of school every year because of the oral problems, the teen problems. And we know that kids who are missing school aren't learning. We also know that some of these bad children who are not reading at grade level by 4th grade are not as likely to be successful in life as their counterparts do. Our message to children is a two times two plus 20. It is to read two times a day, two minutes each time, and make sure they read at least 20 minutes a day. Third grade classes, studies, and science, that of two of four of the kids that have lost are, for some reason, some kind of pain, some kind of oral health problem. So think about a class of 28 kids, seven kids, and even though the study was done for third graders, I think it's applicable for other grades. So this is something that we can help prepare of, and we're starting with our message, the reading message, and the two times two plus 20.
Thank you. But I also have to add, that day of reading didn't stop just at Vandenberg. In every one of our elementary and K-8 buildings, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, our children were engaged in a program of reading in all of our buildings. The kids were wearing hats of some sort. In our buildings, we had green eggs and ham served, and there was celebration. And you know, the neat thing for me is that when I was at Vandenberg and I saw all of that, it brought me right back to when I was a first grader, and my first grade teacher, Mrs. Miller, had us reading and had us eating green eggs and ham. And so I say that because it is these types of experiences that plant lifetime memories and pictures in the lives, into the minds of our children. So again, I want to thank our teachers, I want to thank our children, I want to thank our district, and most importantly, I want to also thank... our district, and most importantly, I want to also thank Lori and Delta Dental and the NEA for a wonderful day of reading. Thank you so much, Lori.
Thank you.
Lot of great things happening in our district. I'd like to invite Mr. Joseph Minnick and the Techno Jays from Southfield High to the podium. Are they out there in the lobby? There they are. Great. Mr. Minnick is the Engineering Academy Coordinator at Southfield High, and he has been engaged in some tremendous, tremendous experiences for these youngsters, starting with our auto show in January. I was extremely impressed with the novariety and the experiences that our children had, not our children, our youngsters. And then, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, or is time, yes, the weekend before at Southfield High, boy, oh, boy, the robotics competition. I mean, it's just another fabulous event. And so I'd like for Mr. Minnick and his youngsters or Techno Jays to share more about these experiences.
Good evening, and thanks for having us tonight. We got Turbo Jays, we got Techno Jays, Turbo Jays this year. Well, we're the Techno Jays and Turbo Jays, we're all part of the acting program. Was originally invited to the auto show to speak at the governor's press conference. And Lamar Johnson, senior, got that opportunity to speak with the governor inside. What a tremendous opportunity for a young man. And the robotics competition that just happened was a great opportunity for City of Southfield and our district, but it could not have happened with this young man right here. He's a two thousand and two alumni of Southfield High in the program. He came back to mentor, and he was the event coordinator, and Dorell really made this thing happen for us. So I really wanted to make sure Dorell's recognized for that. Got a lot of parents behind the team. Mr. Bryant here, he's with us every week, every trip. He's mentoring our students as if they were his own. And all the stuff that's going on is because people like Mr. Bryant, Mr. Tim, for whom Lamar's parents have stick around and make us great times. If the students want to share a few words, take that time now.
Thank you. My name's Stephanie. I just recently joined the Techno Jays actually this year. And, I don't know. I'm going to speak to how great of an experience it's been for me so far, and how, I feel like this is, I've done a lot of things in high school, lots of activities of all the multiple things, lived in multiple places. And I feel like this is one of the most, like, together groups of people. It's amazing, because, you know, I've just met them not too long ago, and I feel like I know them, and a lot of them know me really well, really quickly, and we're all such a good team. And we're always supporting each other, you know, we have our ups and downs, gone through some really tough times, really trying times. And, you know, I just want to thank our team, you know, this is some of us, the rest of us, you know, and all of us. There's a lot more. It's a whole, it's a big group, it's a big family. So I want to thank you guys for making this a good experience for me so far, and thank the men who made this one awesome leader of our entire academy, and thank all of the amazing mentors, you know. For that, it was amazing. Right, it was awesome. And we can't do any of this without the support of our mentors, without our parent support. You know, we know it's demanding, you have to stay after school for a long time, and here on Saturdays, you know, unless it's up to schedules. But, yeah, thank you guys, everyone. Thanks for supporting, and it means an awful lot to the, to our entire team. So thank you, Stephanie.
We will be competing in Traverse City with the Techno Jays Robotics, March twentieth through the twenty-second, which is March.
We do, and we thank you again. And I just wanted to say, for parents that are interested in learning more about what the Techno Jays and this whole arena of robotics and the competitions, it's like, it's a major, major event. We walked in, and kids are dressed up in different colors, and it's so much excitement. And so if you have never, ever experienced it, or you have a question, I would invite you to email Mr. Minnick and find out how you might, as a parent of a middle schooler, get more information about this whole passion and experience. Thank you so much, Mr. Minnick.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Bryant. You know, I just want to thank, I don't know, please come back later. Come on back. But, just so they can see you, so they can see you, you know, they can't see you. This gentleman right here is like Mr. Southfield. Anytime, you know, you see him at football games, you see him at basketball games, he's been like one of the greatest supporters. And he's been such a, just, you know, key part of everything in Southfield High. And I just want to thank you for being who you are. I mean, I didn't know you were involved with the Techno Jays as well, because I see you in everything else in life, you know. I'm trying to wonder, like, you know, what other life do you have? But I just wanted the community to see you and recognize, you know, who you are and all that you do for us, and I thank you, and I think the entire community should thank you.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you so much for doing that.
True.
Thank you. We just need that more and more, so thank you so much. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Donovan. She is sitting in for Deborah Shrimp, who is not available this evening to be with us. And so Ms. Donovan, you have your own report on behalf of your assistant.
The report for budget and finance will be included in your board packet with Ms. Hill. Stephanie will report every month.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. For human resources, we only have the report for, that's contingent of the contestants. But if I might take a moment, I would like to introduce to you Harry Patton, who will be the acting principal for University High School Academy.
For those of you who weren't able to attend, Dr. Cook Robinson's reception the other night, we got a special treat from Mr. Patton. I had no idea that, you know, he'd blow that sack like he does, that, you know, actually, you know, we always talk about Randy Scott, Randy Scott, you got some competition. He blows everything.
Thank you. And I also wanted to just add that one of the strengths that I love about this district and the people that work in the district is the multi-talented capacity that so many of our staff members possess. And not only is Harry a talented musician, but he's a tremendous educator. And for those of you who don't know, he has been the second, if there's possible, but a part of that backbone at University High from its establishment. And we're just very grateful to Harry that you have, are serving in the capacity, and what you always have, and have the tremendous capacity for, is to serve as the interim principal. So thank you. And with that...
Good evening, everyone. You heard our students reference that we've been testing. And not only the high schools have been testing, but we've had testing district-wide throughout February and March. So at this time, our district data coach, Polly Sutenski, a member of our division team, is going to come and share some information with you regarding all of the testing that has been occurring over the last couple of months in the district.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I did want to say that I have a hundred and fifty-three charts here, just in case you notice. I will be brief. So as you heard from our students and from Ms. Williams, our A C T and Michigan M E R exams concluded last week with ninety-eight percent of our eleventh graders were tested. The remaining two percent will be made up during next week's makeup period, March eighteenth through the twentieth. As part of preparing our students for the A C T, the district engages also in Explore Testing and Plan Testing, which are part of the A C T platform. So our tenth graders were tested in October this year using the A C T Plan Test. And our eighth graders are participating this month, in March, in the A C T Explore, which gives them an introduction to what that testing platform is like, and it also gives us information to be able to help prepare and build their skills as they move forward towards that all-important A C T. Our winter mid-year math testing has concluded, and the schools are busy reviewing the data and using it to plan instruction for the rest of the school year. I wanted to give you a quick summary of our math data, and this is aggregate data based on district needs. For math, all grades are meeting or exceeding the growth projection with the exception of ninth grade, which misses growth index target by point seven, by point seven, seven tenths of a point. So they were really close, and I'm really excited to see the math growth, especially in our middle grades this year, it really looks great. Reading, all grades method exceeded their growth projections except for kindergarten. With language usage, all grades method exceeded the growth projections except for ninth and tenth grades. However, the ninth and tenth graders showed more growth from the fall to winter period this year than they did last year. So there are improvements being made in this. And this year, our science test with math with benchmarks, and so we don't have information to compare to from last year, however, I can tell you that I see substantial growth in the data from grades four through nine. And tenth grade just missed their science growth projections by six tenths of a point. So across the board, that science is really looking nice with the benchmark year of the science math. Our all-important meet testing. On February twenty-eighth, the meet, the state will release meet test scores to the state of Michigan, so all the test scores are now public and can be found on myschooldata.org. That's M.I. and then school data, one word, no spaces, dot org. And that, you can see testing data for our district as well as any district or school across the state. You can see county reports and state comparisons. That's available to anyone in the community or in the state to view results. Just a quick overview for our results. Math, subject first. Third grade maintained their achievement scores, and all of the grades showed gains in their scores. In reading, gains were seen across the board except for third and seventh grade. However, the third and seventh grade trend in loss in scores was also seen at the county data level and at the state data level. So they're looking into kind of what went on with that particular test this year. Writing, science, and social studies all showed gains except for ninth grade social studies, which hit a one-point loss. There will be a more formal presentation available for the community regarding math and meet data. Please watch for teacher announcements regarding this presentation. And lastly, student reports for meet data are available at individual schools. Principals are making plans to distribute these reports to parents. That's the end of my report, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
If I could say something off the scores. If you look, if you read the newspapers, you see one picture. Southfield is a community of seventy-two percent African-American students. We are listed as a subgroup, African-American students are listed as a subgroup in every district. So if you compare our subgroup with the subgroups in other districts, you'll find out that we're up here and they're down here. And there's no reason why they can't come up to our scores. However, when you compare our subgroup with the white students, you find that the average for the state is above ours. So we have a ways to go yet. We haven't gone far enough, but we will. We're working on it. And to tie this in to one of the other speakers, I was a delegate to the Fourth World Conference on Women in nineteen ninety-five, and I presented a workshop on reading to the children of the world, to the parents of the world. Because studies show that if you read to a student twenty minutes a day, that student's I Q will go up, can only go up. And these women of the world, literally, they came from every continent, were grateful, and they take. And I hope they continue, and we don't have any follow-up studies, but Southfield can do it too. So not only read to your children, tell your neighbors and your friends, does that improve the I Q and the testing qualities of your students?
This was?
Thank you.
That was, I'm sorry. Thank you so much, because that's very true that you just shared.
I think we have a...
Life person said brevity has its place, so I will be brief. Enrollment updates for the BUCI Center for Early Childhood Education Policy Council in this is the director's report. Two hundred and thirty-two currently enrolled, eighty-three on the waiting list, and thirty-six dropped. Our average daily attendance with our Copa Data Management System at BUCI has been completely updated. The defaults now show that they exclude Fridays and holidays. Eighty-five percent of reminders demanded from federal government. And as we promised, the staff at BUCI went back and they got the proper information for our A D A for January, February, and March. The first week, we reported eighty-four point thirty-one percent. All classrooms are reporting at eighty-five percent or better, except our half-day sessions and the fish room. We have nineteen children with I E Ps. The Child Adult Care Food Program, one thousand six hundred thirty-four breakfasts, two thousand forty lunches, one thousand five hundred and thirty-two snacks. Governance Training, as was mentioned earlier, with help, February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Mabel Jones presented, along with Ms. Hill. And the Quali Assurance Review, an internal review, will take place April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. The kindergarten Qual Self-Assessment and Community Assessment update. Over a hundred and thirty children and families visited schools in the district. The Self-Assessment is complete, and a copy is available in the BUCI main office. And Community Needs Assessment is complete, also available in the main office. BUCI has formed a new partnership with New York Bagel, the New York Bagel located on Twelve Mile near Evergreen in the Kroger Plaza. We have one new hire pending vote, which is Kevin Hall, the enrollment specialist under the GSRP grant. I'm happy to report that sequester funds have been restored. Sixty-seven thousand dollars will be returned to BUCI, however, it's for the fourteen, fifteen school year. And the program also will receive a one-point-three percent cost of living adjustment to the tune of maybe about five hundred dollars per staff member per year. The, there's so much I want to say about this, but because of time, I'm not, but... But the projections for in-kind, in-kind, the federal government actually puts dollars and that is it with time that people spend giving their time at Bussie. So, you can see here, these are some of the larger numbers that I gleaned from the reports. But like, for example, the recruitment fair, if parents show up and other folks show up, Bussie will receive $10,928. And you can see the other numbers there. When you volunteer in your child's classroom or when people in the community volunteer, $6,000 projected just from now until the end of the school year. So, there's a lot of ways that Bussie can earn extra dollars to support the program. Important dates, there are two Friday dates that have been added to the calendar for children to attend to make up for snow days. That's March 14th and Friday, March 21st. The movie night will be twice a month on Thursdays. Coffee and conversation will be on Mondays. And Forgotten Harvest this month is March 21st. So, you see, both specifically at home, we'll be able to easily see that for the child observation records that HeadStar Data, Highscope Core records, shows that there have been improvements from the first period in October of last year through the second period of February of 2014. You can see there, there have been gains and that's a great thing to talk about student achievement at an early age. And then the next slide just compared the gender, male and female, and scores indicate female students' scores slightly higher in three out of the five. But Ms. Hill mentioned something fascinating and I'm sure someone will do a documentary research on you, but there is an all-male preschool classroom in, at Bussie and they have found tremendous gains from making it work. So, all the young, you know, all the males. And then they also have vault, like circular movable things to sit on as opposed to stationary seats like that. So, that's a fascinating study. Ms. Kate Dinkovich, our Director of Finance, has really stepped in and just shown out, as my grandmother would say, with these financial reports. And so, I recreate the wheel. I'm just providing this to the community, but this is through the hard work of our finance department. You can see our program resources, what they are, what the budget allocation is in terms of percent of federal funds and where those dollars are allocated to. The, this also really highlights what the federal funds are, 1.2 million, what we've spent, and then the balance remaining and other items of importance. The status of the expenditures, obviously, we're more than halfway through, so by the time June 30 arrives, Ms. Hill has guaranteed to have spent all the money. The status on non-federal, you can see that there, paying close attention to all of the various things that the district helps to provide for our HeadStar program. So, this is a chart that really details, the next slide really details the, what the district provides in terms of services and personnel. South Hill Public Schools and Bussie are really, really fortunate because right now we're able to do these kinds of things, provide the utilities, the building maintenance, speech services, finance, all those things that equal up to about 55% of the in-kind dollars. The other half of that is what parents are able to do, or I should say a third of that. And again, it's detailed there. And when you just volunteer in a classroom or come to a parent committee meeting, $13.56 is what the federal government thinks that hour is worth. And like one of the parents said yesterday, some of them don't even make that an hour. So, that's important, that to blaze over. And then finally, the in-kind matched with the community, the Board of Education, and then others. So, Board of Education, when governing board people go to those meetings, they said that was more about $31 an hour. So, let's all go. And then attendance at policy council meetings, Forgotten Harvest, all those things come up to about 10% of the in-kind match. And with that, that is the report. More information is available in the main office.
What's that? Volunteers, they have to have children, I think, in Bussie? Get the capital's dollars?
No. Ms. Hill is shaking her head no.
I think that's just volunteers and capital's money.
However, school board members can go in and work and get their own. In-kind. And 25% of the hours of the money has to be from in-kind dollars. Is that correct, Ms. Hill?
Thank you very much for that very important...
Thank you.
And with that, we will continue to the action items. Do I have a motion to open the consent agenda?
I move that we open the consent agenda.
Any comments, questions? Nothing? Call for the vote. Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Kat?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Micah?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I have it. Thank you. Would somebody please open report number 5258, landscaping, snow and ice removal services?
I'm going to be opening and approving report 5258.
Right, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Good evening. Before you move to action items for landscaping services, the board approved this stat in June 2013 and ordered to lose landscaping. Since that time, crews have remade the contracts and we are recommending, putting forward the recommendation to award to a second lower bidder, which is law, by United Lawn Escape, for approximately $75,000 for the remainder of this year, providing we have no more than five snow events over the school year. And $176,000 for the next school year.
Where are they located?
They are located in Washington. Yes, yes.
Do you know if South Hill has one of those?
Uh, no, but they do have another contract with school district in, I mean, it's on the east side, northeast side, I believe. But they also have a contract to one of our surroundings, our adjacent school district. So, they all have their trucks in our area.
I'd like to say we feel the lesson learned from this instance is that the lower bidder isn't necessarily, you know, the best candidate. Be aware that, you know, we can't always intake low bids and, you know, factor in our termination.
Any more questions? Call for the vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Micah?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Ms. Kat?
Yes.
Mr. Kent? And that, you know. Thank you. And now, the information items. These items do not require board action. 6A report 5259, strategic plan, fast reading. Does anybody need any information? Any questions? 36, report 5260, purchasing report, this is a report on purchases over $5,000. Any questions? No? 60, report over 5261, the bill summary. Any questions? No? Well, public participation. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may refer to an administrator or a district superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention any persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. The first speaker is Shawana Watts. Could you please identify yourself, please?
My name is Shawana Watts.
Hello, my name is Shawana Watts.
As my partner said. I'd just like to say hello, board, staff, community, and fellow stu-, I mean, parents. My name is Shawana Watts and I'm the board president of the McIntyre Elementary PTO. With me are social activities leaders, Semir Hollins and Leslie Love Smith, joined by our wonderful McIntyre students you see here with their I'm a Leader t-shirts because today was Leadership Day at McIntyre, so this couldn't have come at a better time. And with that being said, we are here tonight to personally thank you for approving the technology upgrades for the district. We know that the use of the projectors and iPads in each class will help to enhance the learning experience for our children. In fact, we are so excited about the possibility for improved learning that the PTO is on a mission to raise funds for our smart boards for every classroom in the building. This will enable the teachers to make learning more interactive and maximize the use of the equipment you approved. As part of this mission, we are hosting a variety slash talent show where we will showcase our students' talents, have a silent auction, food, and lots and lots and lots of fun. And there are some save-the-day flyers that we would like to share with you. And children, what do you say?
Thank you so much.
Special presentation, today we have with us State Representative Ellen Colvin Luskin. She's here to present the School Reform Task Force Report. Ellen is a member of the Education Committee, or a leadership leader.
Uh, yeah, the Democratic Chair.
Wonderful. And she's a very strong advocate for public education. Thank you, Ms. Luskin.
First, I'd like to thank all of you, honorable members of the school board, for giving me the opportunity to present the work of the Education Task Force. The Education Task Force occurred over a six-month period and provided copies to all of you. And there are also additional copies outside for members of the community. And I hope that, that anyone who is interested will have the opportunity to take a copy and review it. But I would like to thank you all for this opportunity. The work of the task force, well, let me begin by saying that my name is Ellen Luskin and I am a third-term state representative in the Michigan House of Representatives. And I currently serve as the Democratic Vice Chair of the House Education Committee. And I also have the great honor of chairing the task force that put together this report. And we traveled across the state soliciting input from a variety of academics, parents, students, school board members, to try to come up with a report that would be an alternative based on data and based on best practices to some of the harmful policies that are being put forth in the Education Committee. And just to, just to give a little bit of history, the Education Committee took up a bill last term that would, in effect, create the Educational Achievement Authority, which is intended to exist as a separate school district for the purpose of running and taking over schools across the state. Right now, the Educational Achievement Authority is operating and has taken over 15 schools in the city of Detroit. And the, the data and what we're seeing after almost two years of what is a very, very dangerous experiment, we're seeing that not only is the notion of a separate school district that operates outside of a democratically and community governed school board is harmful in and of itself, but we have a school district that was created to give improvement in our schools. And in a sense, when we now have the most recent need data, what we're finding out is that the students have done worse. So, you've got a district that is, we believe, doing harm to the students in our schools. What I've also included, which I will pass out to the board members, is an op-ed piece that published today in the Detroit News by myself and my co-chair on the task force, calling out some of the rosy claims about this, this school district and giving really the community the facts. But the reason why it was so important for me to come before you is because of some of the information that we discovered when we began examining the results of this Educational Achievement Authority. So, the bill that, that wound its way and is currently finding its way through the Michigan House would, in a sense, embed in statute this separate school district that is operated by a chancellor and is operated by an appointed board that meets when they feel like it and does not serve as the pleasure of the community of the, of the students that are attending those schools. When the chancellor of the EAA came to Lansing to testify and we asked him, what can you tell us, can you show us why these, why we're hearing such horror stories from students, from parents? Can you please tell us what the disconnect is between what we're hearing from teachers? We're hearing of enormous safety concerns, we're hearing high teacher turnover, all the things that we don't want in a community school. And we're hearing these stories. Can you please explain to us why you think that this is appropriate for, for any student? And his response was, "I don't have to tell you." Number one. And number two, "Just trust me." Well, we don't have to trust someone when they're not willing to come forward, you know? If in fact you have figured out the magic bullet of education, wouldn't you think that we would just be shouting it from the highest hill? And instead, what we were faced with was someone that said, "Just trust me." So, I asked for documents and what I got was basically a response of no. So, I filed a FOIA request, a Freedom of Information Act request, which any citizen can file. And despite an awful lot of stonewalling and just throwing up all kinds of roadblocks, finally, I got a data dump of about 1,800 pages of documents. Now, I know you all don't know me, but in my former life, before I ran for office, I was a trial attorney and I practiced patent law and, oh, do we love going through documents. Send documents and we will go through them. And there's always little kernels of information in these massive amounts of documents. And what, what disturbed me amongst many things that I found disturbing was an application for a grant that Dr. Covington, on behalf of the EAA, made. And he signed it under penalty of perjury, securing a $35 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education. And I quote that he or she... And I quote that he claimed that the EAA will take over persistently low-performing schools from ten of the largest districts, including number ten, Southfield Public School Starting July one, twenty-twelve, EAA will assume the administrative operations of fifty-five public schools in the ten largest school districts over a five-year period. Now, we're past July first, twenty-twelve, and I'm not aware of the EAA operating any school in Southfield Public Schools. That got me very, very concerned, and so I continued to do additional investigations and realized that they were building this district really on a house of cards. And the more that we're learning, the more dangerous this experiment is becoming. The bill that would take this EAA and expand it statewide thankfully has been halted and it has not passed and has not made it to the Governor's Desk. However, every single day that we go to Lansing, the bill is being brought back up and they are desperately trying to get this bill to the Governor's Desk. So that's all by way of background, but I want to bring what I believe is good news. And one of the arguments that we kept hearing in committee was, well, okay, the EAA is not doing a good job and we understand that it's an experiment, but at least we're doing something. And so that's sort of a reason to exist, well, you know, at least we're doing something. Well, in my opinion, if there's something that's causing more harm than good, then you have to call it quits, you have to stop. But people kept saying, okay, well, if not this, if we don't believe that the state coming in and taking over schools, and doing a poor job of it, by the way, is not the right way to go, then what is? And that's really the basis for the work of the task force. In other words, if you're going to say no to something, then you better come forward with something that you can afford and that you can say, "This is the right way to go." So we took that responsibility very seriously. And beginning in April of the past year, we began the work of what is the state's role in dealing with school districts across the state that are in crisis for several reasons? What is the state's role? We don't believe that it's appropriate for the state to come in and take them over or to dissolve them, which is what happened in Unilever and Inkster, where the states that came in have obliterated two districts, and have said, "You're gone." And the work of the task force, we made a number of recommendations, and I'd like to focus on the two recommendations for which we have drafted and we have submitted legislation. And I have copies outside, House Bill 5268 and 5269. Those are the first two bills that we have introduced as a response to the state takeover model that's embodied in the EAA. And very, very briefly, House Bill 5268, which I've left copies outside, what that would do is, under the auspices of the Michigan Department of Education, in conjunction with the ISB, for a district that is facing challenges, the department in conjunction with the ISB or a consortium of ISBs would be able to conduct a very, very detailed audit in terms of what's happening to cause that school to struggle. And the interesting thing is, when I began work on this, what I learned is that the Department of Education, years ago, used to conduct these audits. And these audits are based on best practices of what makes a school district great. You all in Southfield know what makes a school district great because you have it, right? I mean, you are a living, breathing embodiment of what it takes to make a school district great, community involvement. I mean, I go to school districts meeting all across the state, everyone's been out in the audience. I mean, you're attached to what makes a school district great. Excellent and committed school board members, committed teachers, rigorous programs, these are the things that make a school district great. The educational audit idea is to allow for the department to go in and instead of assuming why a district is struggling, to actually understand what's happening. Is it finances? Is it a large influx of English language learners, which a lot of our districts are facing? Is it a curriculum issue? Is it a combination of all of those issues? And the audit using best practices would allow for the building to undergo an analysis of what could cause this struggle is. Then, because to just do an audit and then walk away, that's not a solution either. But then the idea is to publish so that all of the stakeholders understand what's happening. And then, instead of going in and taking over the district, the department convenes stakeholders, including community members, school board members, teachers, people that have a vested interest in turning around their district and, you know, solving the challenges and the crises that it might be facing, and leading the stakeholders through a turnaround plan that the community can raise. Now, what we know from looking at these types of models in other states is that when a community has invested and understands the challenges that they're facing, they're given a chance to correct the problem, that those types of changes are far more sustainable than when the state or some entity comes in and just wipes away. But I can tell you, what happened with those fifteen schools that were taken over by the EAA, every teacher was laid off. They were told, "Well, we can apply that." Students and IEPs, their IEPs will be written in violation of federal law. Eight hundred special students were recertified. They were told, "Goodbye, this school doesn't have a program for you." What we know is that when these types of takeover districts operate, there's only one person that benefits, and those are the private vendors that are coming in to make a lot of money off the backs of our children. And we can't let that happen. So the good news is, is that the bills that the task force, the bills that we have introduced are getting, they're getting some attention. We filed a discharge motion because the chairwoman of the House Education Committee did not even have a hearing on the bill, and so we filed a discharge motion, and the bills are now sitting on the floor. But through committed parents, school board members, like all of you, we are continuing to exert pressure on the House leadership to take up what we believe is a positive alternative to the state coming in and taking over schools. So I thank you so much for your willingness to allow me to come and present. It's twice that it's going to hire an awful lot of warriors. And any questions, any thoughts, comments, we are always open to that. The House then Task Force Report is online, and there are, there's another website that I would like to make sure that you're all aware of, it's called Inside the EAA, insidetheea.com. And what we're doing is we're using that site to put up information as we hear it about some of the things that are happening in those schools that the EAA is taking over. So with that, I thank you so much, and I'll see any questions either now or later.
Luthen, we thank you so much for coming and telling us about this. Thank you very, very much for taking time out of your busy schedule. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Excuse me. Could you give us the website where we can get information on Bill 5268? Yes.
Legislative.gov, MI Legislature.gov.
Legislative.gov? Yes, in terms of where that is from. Yes, and information about the bill itself. Yes, that's everybody's, MI Legislature.
And we have one more card of some of the most interesting, Rudy Marroway.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to speak, my son also-
Excuse me, would you give your address, please?
Oh, one seven four seven five, New Hampshire. And my son also goes to McIntyre. I had the plan that myself of going to Shane O. Thompson in South Ohio. It was a brief conversation, St. D's when I was a kid, so I've been in Southfield a long time. And I just want to say, I was, you know, they thanked you for approving the projector and the iPad, but I'm going to ask you to please, you know, help us move into the twenty-first century because Southfield County is back. There should be no reason that every school doesn't have a smart board in every classroom. And I know you're going to say it's about money, but it's always been about money, okay? And I remember with Southfield, you know, putting up to, people would bring their kids to Southfield. Now, you have Southfield residents, and I still laugh, they said it was a burden, you know, that, I remember when Berkeley was just a, you know, I don't want to say anything bad, but I'm pity, but there was never a thought of just sending Southfield kids to Berkeley School. So that being said, that, you know, I always complained, and she's a wonderful lady, a wonderful lady, um, this back with the principal. I always, you know, I always say a little much, you might say her, and she said, "You know, I'm thankful you think too, Mr. Marroway, Mr. Marroway, I'm thankful you think too, talk to the board itself." You know, I can do the board's talk, the things that should be done, you know, I know it's about money, I know it's tough times, but if you keep using that excuse and you don't rectify the things before they're broken, it just gets worse. It looks like a leak, if you don't fix a leak in the house, it's going to get worse and worse and worse and worse. So, you know, that being said, the PTO would do that talent, so that's wonderful, that's wonderful, but, you know, it's up to the school board, and if the money's not there, I feel it was probably of the school board members to reach out to the businesses in Southfield. Southfield, at one point in time, had probably what half a million people coming into the work, I don't know if it's still that much, there's over seventy-five, forty-five hundred companies that had offices in the city, I don't know if it's still that many, but still, they're out there. As board members, you know, we voted to end, but part of that job is reaching out, hitting that, asking for the money. You know, you're a politician, and politicians ask for money, whether it be for reelection or for, we definitely, definitely need smart boards in every class in McIntyre. I don't know if it happens in this, but, you know, I think it's great that the parents are doing, but it shouldn't happen because you have to, you have to do better.
Sure, and I appreciate your advocacy for McIntyre, and I know it's best for the police also, but at our last board meeting in February, we did, the board graciously approved just what you asked, or asked before.
Oh, smart boards?
Smart boards and an iPad for every teacher, and, I'm not sure when, McIntyre's scheduled because our IT people are not here tonight, but they are on the docket for making that happen and expanding the opportunity for our children across the district and every one of our schools. And that is because of the fiscal integrity that Dr. Michael Robinson, our finance department, the Board of Education, has been anchored over the last several years, even though we have shared with the community that we have, are tightening the belt and we're reserving and conserving and making cuts where we needed to, but the purpose of all of that was to be able to move forward and provide for our children. Not only are we providing technology, but we also had the board to approve for one point seven million dollars in instructional materials for our children, to include electronic textbooks, you know, and even at McIntyre, our children will receive reading materials in every grade level, science materials, and they will all have electronic components. So we are right with you, but we have to plan and we have to put forth and make sure that we are in order and that we don't purchase and then go into a deficit because of a purchase. So our finance department does a great job of keeping us in track and in order and making sure that we are on point, and our board is busily helping us to stay on point also. So I thank you for your bringing us to the board this evening, that do know that we're right there with you.
I just want to say, a personal congratulations on Governor and the President, and I've never heard you speak before, but I love your voice. I mean, I don't know if you're going for the position, but if you are, good luck with that.
Before you sit down, you know, this is why we need more parents such as you to attend these meetings, so you can find out what's going on, what we're doing here, and take it back to the community, you know? Look at how I started, sitting right there to find out what was going on in this year. I'm there with them, we were always here, every meeting, so we can avoid our concerns and make sure the board listens to us as parents. So I encourage you to take information back, to school to a parent, to invite more parents to get involved. That's what's needed, get involved.
And just to be clear, the smart boards are coming back.
Yes, and I'm for every teacher.
They said the iPad is just, they didn't think the smart ones would come.
Okay.
They turned the community foundation, or Southfield Foundation, just a little too early, and reaching out to the board, and at some point, that business community, those members, they take over the foundation that we are providing at this point. Our teachers, our principals, they're reaching out to the community, making partnerships, so we're doing all that, excellent, excellent.
And if you like, and if you like the way she speaks, you should hear her sing. Thank you, Karen. And before we adjourn, I would like to say that Mr. Lewis is not here, Nathaniel Lewis, there was an excused absence, he told us he wouldn't be here, and we have a legitimate reason. So I thank you all for coming. Oh, board members, we have one more step. If you can.
You know, I've been, things kept coming up that stopped me from stepping up, and back when I was small, we were engaged in our village campaign, and so as not to confuse the issue, I held back from making any announcements at that time. Recently, we've had the announcement of our superintendent leaving two bills to the ISB, not leaving us for any particular reason other than, you know, she now has a higher quality in advocacy. Listening to the presentation from Representative Luthen tonight, I want to announce to the community that I will be running for the seat currently held by Rudy House in the State Legislature. I think that this is a good time in terms of assuming that role because I feel like I'm needed at that level to help in that fight, to fight against the EAA and all the other changes that are attacking public education. So I'm announcing tonight my candidacy to run for the Michigan State Legislature, representing the thirty-fifth district, which is Southfield, Layton Village, and Southfield Township. I'm doing that- I'm doing that cautiously, I'm stepping out there on faith. This is something that, it's not because I don't have the passion for this community, I love Southfield, I love what we've done here, but I also feel like this board is cohesive, we've pretty much been united in everything that we've done, we've demonstrated our ability to unite this entire community around this school district. And that's the strength of Southfield, is the strength of the Southfield Public Schools. Not to denigrate what anybody else does, but any community in this state that is failing, at the heart, that were failing school districts. Because we have such a strong school district, we have a very strong community as we go through that. So I'm saying this in terms of, I'm not leaving because of any record, there's nothing going on within this community, other than people are moving on to greatness. We talked about that, you know, for the past couple of years, how we go from good to greatness. Southfield Public Schools has gotten to that level of greatness now, in that we have the highest achieving African-American students in the entire state of Michigan. We are closing the achievement gap. That is, that is a tremendous effort. We are ahead of some of the majority districts and we're closing the gap on some others. And for us to be in that situation is my feeling now that the children of Covert, Benton Harbor, Pontiac, Detroit, all need to have what we have here in Southfield. So I want to lend my efforts, you know, to make sure that all the children of the state of Michigan are able to get the same level of education that we have here in the city of Southfield. And I think that, God willing, that I'll be able to achieve that with your help, your support and understanding that we know how to get it done here in Southfield. And that's going to be the basis of everything that I do going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Buchanan, I wish you the best. I hope you make it. I think that those other school districts have what it takes. It's up to us to set an example for them, and I hope we're starting it, that they have the quality people that we have and they just have to get them out of the woodwork and get them interested. You know, people don't think about running. Mr. Buchanan is leaving the school board at the end of the year, and I am too. We will have two slots here. And it's up to the people in this community to find people with our background, our passion to run for this office. We have one sitting back there, I think, no? Yes. He's nodding his head. So think about it. Get the people out, get off the vote in this community. That's what we need, we need to keep it growing. Thank you. And with that?
No comment other than to wish you a good standing well in a candidacy. And if there's anything I can do to support, maybe.
We heard it. I just want to say, a lot of parents received information regarding superintendent's search and the meetings are set up for community involvement. And I just beg you to come out in a tentative meeting and voice your opinion about the school district. So I sent emails to at least three hundred people, so I hope some of them show up and even voice that opinion, because you are very important and we need your input. Thank you. Well, the Southfield Board of Education has secured the services of the Michigan Leadership Institute to assist the board with the selection of the district's next superintendent. The community has invited us to meet with representatives of the search firm and provide input on Wednesday, March twelfth, or Thursday, March thirteenth, at six thirty PM in the John W. English Administrative Building, that's this one. Please contact the board office at two four eight seven four six four three six six for more information. Future meetings, March twelfth and thirteenth at six thirty PM, the community forum with Michigan Leadership Institute. March twenty-five at six o'clock PM, student hearings. Trustees Nathaniel Lewis, Betty Robinson, Rance Williams, and Michael Poole are scheduled. April the eighth at seven o'clock PM, a regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move it to adjourn. You mean?
And with that, we adjourn.